Love to start on time, I've got my wonderful timekeeper here. So, the Thornden Key Collective, a very warm welcome to you. Come to the table please, as many of you who would like to be here. And if you just obviously speak directly into your microphone, because we've got three of the councillors, the Farangi, Onzlo Western on Zoom. Uh, no, I think there's just a bit of illness, so yeah, so yeah. Right, so you, okay, right.
Shall we start now? Okay, so my name's Dale Scott, I've been assisting the Thornden Key Collective just with the preparation of submissions and bringing everyone's ideas and rationalising them. We've got Emma who owns the dance studio on Thornden Key and then, do you want to introduce yourself? Paul Robinson is...
From the Woolstore, chairman of the local property council and I've been here before several times.
Look, instead of going through our written submissions, key points in detail, which I'm sure you've already read it anyway, I'll just quickly skip through some of that stuff and then come to the important bit, which is our proposed alternative solution. So, in terms of our scrutiny that we've poured over the proposal, there are two key areas where we see failings. One is a procedural failing in terms that we have not had adequate opportunity to consult on this current proposal as it's been put to us. The second is a failure to consider some very relevant considerations and incorporate them into the decision-making regarding the merits of what's been proposed. And then the third issue, a number of factual areas which we've identified and we think also haven't been given due weight in the decision-making to date. So, in terms of the consultation failures, we're aware and we know that between 2015 and 2018, there were some workshops held. Now, these are very general in nature, they weren't about we are going to change parking in this way, it was more blue-sky thinking, how can we improve Thornden Key? Post-it notes on a wall and some thoughts were put up. That kind of approach is not fit for purpose when it's, when you're putting a proposal like this, a very concrete change forward, it's not able to draw out adequately the economic and social impacts. There was also no consultation around alternative design options for achieving the safety outcomes that you're seeking to achieve. Had there been, say, several options put forward and an invitation to consult, there could have been co-design with the community and that hasn't occurred. And as we've mentioned, it was only four, four and a half weeks ago that this proposal was first surfaced to us. And we think that having a clipped three and a half week period to then marshal everyone together and do our own economic analysis, because one was not conducted in the first instance, is insufficient time. And that leads me on to the failure to consider the economic and social impacts. Now, the area is a destination shopping area and there's unavoidable reliance on vehicles for both businesses and many of the customers that frequent there. And for that reason, reliable access to car parking is a critical enabling factor for many of the businesses. If you remove that, you'll in turn hollow out the area because those businesses will simply relocate to Poteva, to the Hut Valley. You won't have a reduction in vehicle reliance, you'll just displace vehicle reliance. And in doing so, you'll lead to thousands of people travelling many extra kilometres every year, which increases emissions, it doesn't decrease them. There's also a failure to consider the car park shortfall. The data collected around car park utilisation was collected during alert level two, right after alert levels three and four, when the economy was still recovering from lockdown. The car park utilisation during that month is by no means representative of normal operating hours. Safety impacts, there's been no consideration of the safety impacts associated with parallel parking, which we've identified as 82% more dangerous than angled parking for various reasons which haven't been scrutinised. And in terms of proposed solutions that would achieve the safety outcomes, we've identified Davis Street at the train station angled parks being capable of conversion to parallel parking. They're long-use parks that are usually used by people commuting, parking and then working in the city. Reducing the speed limit to 30 kilometres and relaxing the angle of angled parking would also increase safety, as would installing mirrors for cars exiting the angled parks in a northbound clearway, like the southbound clearway, which is going to operate at times when most cyclists are passing through the area, means that there are no cars parked, which would reduce the chance of cyclists, most cyclists ever encountering vehicles.
Emma.
So, on Thursday, I believe you'll make this decision to change the angled parking to parallel. And after that, the businesses and the organisations on Thornden Key will deal with the consequences. So I think what would have been good before, I'm scared for you to make that decision because I'm worried that some of the data isn't accurate and as Dale mentioned, came from an alert level two month. I would really like to see more data on the current usage of car parks. I would like to, I've talked about this at my table, I'd like to see that the under 15-minute car parking is included in that report because I don't want to be on the wrong side of history here. We all support the overall vision of what's happening, you know, in general with reducing usage of cars, but there are some groups of Wellingtonians who need to use their cars. And this is a huge drastic change, both this project and the Let's Get Wellington Moving, to take out half the car parks in one go. So, we just feel this is really rushed, that the data's not right and that you're going to make a decision that might be based on things that aren't correct. Yeah, I think that's all I would say.
So, as a occupant of Thornden Key for the last 20 years, we had a good chance to see what's going on there. I'm worried, this is the first time, something's really kept me awake at night. Covid lockdown, giving away 50% of the rent for three months, that's not, that was easy to do because relationships were in great shape, we were all in the same camp. Unfortunately, this proposal has pitted corridor against community. And it's like a lot of the Let's Get Wellington Moving projects going on, you can see this division happening across the city as corridor competes with community. I'd like us to change our language and stop using the word corridor and start using the word corodand, something that says that not only will we look at our transport needs, but we will look at our community needs as well. So, this week I had a fantastic opportunity to go to the Growth Forum in Porirua and I was inspired by the presentation given by Nātitiwa by Helmut Bodlach out there, where he talked about his vision for where his iwi was going in that particular city. And he made a wonderful comment, he said, "Don't start out unless you have some idea of where you're going." And the difficulty with this proposal is it's a repair job, or we think it's a repair job, there is no end vision. To me, the end vision is that we should have a world-class cycleway that connects Patoni to Setun. At the moment, we've got $120 million earmarked to build something down to Kaifora. We've got a bugger's muddle sorted out from Kaifora to the railway station and we have a beautiful cycleway emerging from Oriental Bay to Setun. Why don't we follow practices of places like Copenhagen or indeed our dearly beloved brethren up in Auckland who have built the lighted pathway? Not such a big deal, an 800-metre elevated cycleway, this cost $18 million. One-sixth of what we're proposing to use to get to Kaifora. So, if we knew that the council had vision and was working towards an end point, we could deal with all sorts of pain in the short term. But at the moment, the risk is, this just kicks the can down to Featherstone Street and you've seen my wonderful award-winning video, which was shot at 8:15 in the morning and not at 7:15 and not at 9:15, shot at 8:15, showing the ease with which traffic cyclists can travel down that pathway at the moment. The risk is, is that that just becomes a can sitting at Bunny Street and sitting in Featherstone Street. Why don't we think out into the future and work towards that point? Thank you.
Councillor Conde Sparrow and then Mayor Foster, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Just when I was at your table, you talked about that parallel parking is 82% more dangerous than angled parking. And I guess that's based on the small sample size of 23 crashes over the last 10 years on Thornden Key, is that correct?
It's the only empirical data that has been put forward to us to scrutinise by the council. There's no other empirical data around crashes. Because as you said, it's the only data of recorded crashes. I can't use the anecdotes that you've been given.
So, but the advice that our staff are relying on is the Ostrode Safety Guardians, which is based on all crash data across Australia and New Zealand, which is a much larger sample size? Would you acknowledge that a small sample size across 23 crashes, across 10 years, across a small stretch of road isn't actually particularly good evidence on which to say that angled or parallel parking is more safe?
From a data analytics perspective, swapping out empirical localised data for generalised, non-site-specific data is also not best practice. And you'll see in the tail risk report that the reliability of some of the assumptions made in that data you've just mentioned is actually quite low. It even specifies it in those documents themselves.
I think just to add to that, what we know, looking at ACC data to December last year, Wellingtonians experienced 4,700 cycle accidents involving an ACC claim. Last year, 1% of Wellingtonians lodged an ACC claim for a cycle accident. That's probably somewhere in the vicinity of 45,000 during the period of data that we're measuring. And we have got, I don't know how much money you've got in mind to spend on this project, but you've got sort of 20 or 30 million earmarked to deal with something that looks like about two serious accidents over the last 10 years. It does beg the question of how much money you're prepared to spend dealing with the other, the other vast number, 4,698 accidents that happened last year.
Look, thank you. Two areas of question if I can. The first one of them is that there was a lot about what's the rush? And it seemed that the key bit was about the data that we've got in terms of parking occupancy. So if we can get some good data, and I would hope officers would be able to give us that because we've got the parking sensors there, we should be able to do that. If we've got that data, it shows, yep, plenty of parking, proceed. No parking, not proceed, is that? You know, I'm being simplistic there, or proceed in a different way. But if we've got that data, surely we ought to be able to use that, if we've got it.
So, Mayor, I think it has to be put together. What is missing out of this whole equation is an economic analysis. We know that the properties along Thornden Key are worth roughly half a billion dollars. We know there are roughly 3,000 jobs along there. We know there are roughly 1,000 beds. If you take, if your initiative takes out 5% or 10% of the economic value, you've suddenly tripled, quadrupled, quintupled your project cost. So, we have to have this independent economic analysis. I don't know how you expect us to, A, fund your long-term plan by paying 13% more rates if we lose 48% of our car parks. I don't know how we achieve carbon reductions if the key enabler being car parks means that we don't have the revenue being generated by our buildings to put in place warm roofs and efficient energy systems. I don't know how we participate in the economic growth that you forecast for Wellington. I don't know how we accommodate our share of the extra 80,000 people if you take away 48% of our key economic enabler, which is the car park.
Yeah, I guess what I was asking is that if we can show that it is the 48%, then that's one thing. If we show that the parking is surplus, that'd be a different thing, if that is the case. I'm not suggesting it's one or tara.
It's not just a total percentage of parking because you can't just view Thornden Key as one.
Trying to be simplistic, so that was a half a conversation.
Sure, I mean, all we've asked for is for the utilisation to be revisited and actually counted in a reliable way. We've asked for an independent peer review of Waka Kotahie's flawed data analysis and we've asked for an economic impact analysis. Those are three pretty simple requests that any due process would ordinarily accommodate.
I think, look, this is the council's idea. It's incumbent on the council to tell us how we generate extra revenue to pay a 13% rate rise for the long-term plan. It's incumbent, if you undertake this, it's incumbent on you to show us how we reduce our carbon footprint down to near zero by 2030. It's incumbent on you to show us how we're going to accommodate our share of the 80,000 people who are coming to Wellington. At the moment, that onus is looking like it's very firmly on us to prove that to you, not vice versa.
Okay, cool. Look, thank you. And the other one is, you asked for sort of the overall vision of where we're going in terms of this. And I agree, it's probably not that easy necessarily to understand what that looks like, but there is, you know, there is a network which is being worked on and there's also, in terms of the route that you talked about going around to Setun, there is a very clear proposition to go from Pankaro to, actually, Pankaro to Red Rocks, which has been a proposition around for a little while. So, have we not got that, but it's just that we can't build it all at once?
I think it's fantastic vision, but we have to get, one thing this council has never, ever, ever done in all the years I've been involved in property council and in property here, I've never seen this council look at best practice in another city in the world. I've only ever seen them look at best practice when it comes to drink driving.
So, just a bit under other sort of basic question. Dale, I think it was you who talked about the fact we could have mirrors to help people on angled parking. Where would you put the mirrors?
I've seen that solution be used before, we have them on poles near where the angled parks are. It's not a solution by itself, it's part of a suite of solutions. If you relax the angle of parking, have the mirrors and reduce the speed limit, you have the ability for cars exiting angled parks to see traffic coming down the line, including cyclists, as they reverse. If you relax the angle of the car park, they have better line of sight of oncoming vehicles and cyclists. If those oncoming vehicles and cyclists are forced to go at 30 kilometres instead of 50, in concert, those changes will probably better achieve the safety outcomes than simply adjusting everything to parallel parking.
Okay, I'm not sure it's the dream solution, it sounds like something the Wellington Sculpture Trust should be doing, but...
Well, they probably were the ones that did the data analysis that Waka Kotahie relied on too, so maybe.
Right, councillor Day.
So, you've made some sort of assumptions through your economic analysis and I'm just wondering, a serious accident has a huge cost. We know it's in the millions for an individual accident, the cost to the country and the community. How did you factor that in to your analysis? Because obviously that has a big perspective.
So, there are two economic analysis components. One is what you've addressed, the harm to, the cost of an injured individual. But another is the impact on the local businesses as well. You need both. We're not saying that you shouldn't have the one that you have mentioned, we're saying take both. It's, you need to have the competing interests and how they sound out economically. Is that not correct?
A reasonable proxy would be to look at ACC's national cycle accident data. Nationally, we have 50,000 accidents per year and I think last year ACC claims were $97 million, roughly $1,800 per claim.
That's just part of the cost of an accident though, isn't it? So the ACC perspective is, I mean, people lose, people lose their jobs over it and you know, that does affect, it does affect much more than it has wider family effects, but I guess...
Sure, that turns to your point though, there's only one serious accident that has occurred on Thornden Key in the last 10 years that's recorded.
That's one that's been reported to the police.
That's right, but I can imagine that one that involves serious hospitalisation, oh, sorry, if an injury did involve serious hospitalisation, it would probably be reported. That one accident involved a cyclist colliding with a pedestrian at a level crossing.
Okay, thank you. Any last questions, councillors? Right, well, look, thank you very much for coming and we really appreciate it. You've given up a lot of your time to prepare your submission, so thank you. So we look forward to what you've got to say and we'll give you the same amount of time that the previous group had, okay, just to be fair, thank you.
Kia ora mati atu atato kataa iari. We'll introduce ourselves, my name's David Tripp.
Hi, Patrick Morgan.
Hello, Rebecca.
Jen.
Diane.
And Ron Benning, you know me.
They drew the short straw for me, being in the middle of controversy is not my favoured place. I have a presentation which I hope is about, just, it helps me talk if you've got something else to look at. So, I'm with a group called Doctors' Fractures Safe Transport, we've met with you before. What's our why? We've got to change the way we do transport urgently. We have a climate emergency and need a dramatic reduction in admissions because climate change is bad for business. We have congestion, our city is gridlocked, that is bad for business. And we have a health crisis, we are dying of preventable disease. Dead people are bad for business. Change will not be easy, but I hope we accept that change is necessary. And I will put in my little bit, because I always do. Cycling is critical to the health of our people with demonstrated reductions and bad things. And I'll say it before I'll say it again, you have the health budget and it's called transport. What's the big picture here? Thornden Key is a critical link in a whole way of getting from the Hut Valley to Wellington. We've been awaiting 100 years for an active transport option. It's not just for us, it's also for the people from up in Newlands and also from Kandala and Naio. And unfortunately for the poor retailers on Thornden Key, that is the weakest link. And I acknowledge the difficulty this poses for them. What we're asking for is you connect two cities and anticipate 2,000 cyclists a day each way through this route, so we're not talking about now, we're talking about three to four years' time, with half the rate of cancer and heart disease, freeing up about 1,000 car parks in your city, which is one of the cheapest options to reduce congestion. We're addressing climate change, actually, this is a symbolic picture of what we need for our city. That's our vision. Where are we at the moment? This is off your website, I think about two o'clock this morning, I'm sorry. The number of cyclists you currently have on Thornden Key, per month. Last year in the blue, this year in the green, that's just under 1,000 a day. I do want to address safety. This is the data, sorry, from the last consultation in 2017. I didn't revise it because if we had yet another consultation, I'd lose the world to live. This is a very vulnerable space for cyclists. I don't want to dive into the detail. All I will say is that our traffic engineers, those with expertise in this area, have said this road is inherently unsafe and that will be echoed by every one of the people who bike through there. And I would ask you please to listen to the victims. I am one. We argue a lot about parking on Thornden Key, with some saying it's busy and me throwing up anecdotes like that, I don't think that helps. Yes, we have data and I'm going to present mine, I sourced it from the council through the Official Information Act process, it was a transparent process. I did my own data crunching, I would encourage you to do your own. This is the average weekday parking occupancy on all the 388, 380 car parks along Thornden Key from June last year to May this year. What it shows is that we nearly get to 60% occupancy in the middle of the day. For businesses, I imagine the high turnover parking is of particular interest. There are 268 P120 parks along the centre of that strip. This is the data from May, from June last year to May this year in green. And because of the concerns about lockdown, I wanted to reassure you and so just did another bit and superimposed that from January this year to May this year, which is in the blue, your data is reliable from last year. Lockdown did not affect the parking statistics long term. What that says is that you are just tipping 50% parking occupancy and that's a very important resource. Can I drill into that again from the start of, from over the last year? So, this is going to be a little bit complicated to understand, but bear with. If you took the car parking capacity on Thornden Key, so every minute of every day for every car park and added it all together, and that's your whole, how is that parking distributor, who's using it at the moment? And what we find is that the long-term car park, greater than four hours, uses 33% of that total parking capacity for 4% of the cars, they are your commuters. And over half of your total parking is for those staying over two hours. So, of the existing 50% utilised car parking, over half of that is for people staying for longer periods of time. And particularly with the long-term parking, the commuter car parking, I would say to you, your arterial routes don't make good car parks. That's not a sensible use of this space. The other thing that I just stumbled across, you might want to know this, in terms of illegal parking, those staying beyond the designated time, over that year there were 25,000 hours and if you ticketed them all, you'd get another half a million dollars in revenue. Do what you like with that. So what I see here is a resource that you have and we've been round this consultation thing, I've got a number of times since 2008 was when I came on the scene. Where you as a councillor asked to make some very difficult decisions and I don't for a moment want your job, be clear on that. But we have a vision of connecting two cities, we have the health and safety of our people, we have our environment, we have the congestion in our city and you have to balance that against the local needs. I don't think you have made that decision well in the past and I would ask you respectfully to reconsider that. There's, there's something more about this for me than just transport. Is when one group secures exclusive access to a public resource while in excess of their needs, resulting in vulnerable people being harmed, it is about justice. I'll leave my comments there and Patrick will just conclude.
Thanks, David. This is not new to anyone, we've been talking about this for more than 10 years. So, it's a bit odd to hear people saying that, you know, really seeing it for the first time in detail. I think there's been plenty of opportunity for people to have their say and we welcome this additional chance, thank you for that. This deserves scrutiny, I'm all for that. And also, I like the comment that Thornden Key could be a 30 kilometre an hour boulevard. I think there's an amazing possibility for Thornden Key. But looking at the decision that we're making now, the can has been kicked down the road for too long and talking about dealing with the consequences, people on bikes are dealing with those consequences every day. It is the scariest part of most people's bike ride and it's not okay to leave it like that. Where do I start? Angle parking being safer than parallel? Yep, you can expect to hear a bit of misinformation today and that would be probably the one I'd highlight there. I think we need to listen to our traffic experts on that. In terms of car parking, there's 29,000 car parks on an off-street in the city and David's presented... presented on the occupancy rate on Thordun Key. So there's certainly a lot of potential for improvement there. When it comes down to it, as David said, this is about justice, is that there's a remedy open to the council to lower the risk on Thordun Key. And I don't agree that waiting until let's get Wellington moving delivers is a valid, a valid way to respond. The outcome is unknown, the timetable is unknown. And I think if the council can send a clear message that it's willing to act on an immediate safety concern to protect people on Wellington, people on bikes. I would conclude by reading 400 names, people who signed the petition earlier this year, asking you, begging you to make these changes. I'm not going to do that today, but these are all individuals who have taken the time to have their say on this. Just one from Emma that I got today, she said she couldn't be here today. She said this is the scariest part of her day, is riding her bike down Thordun Key, and she really urges the council to take a step this week to fix that. Thank you. Ron, do you want to add anything there, or shall we respond to questions now?
Questions?
Thank you very much. Councillor Day, first up.
Kia ora kato. So we have had some economic analysis put forward to us, and I just wondered what you think about that, what your response to that would be, and what do you think about the answer that we got?
Yeah, I mean, I think the way to evidence is pretty clear around the world, that making streets, addressing the sense of place, not just movement, making a street more attractive for people to visit on foot, on bike, on bus, on car, is, it's gold to a business owner to have the city want to spend tens of millions of dollars on Thordun Key is great news for our business owners and property owners along there. And as the area intensifies, we need to cope with moving people more efficiently down that space. That means reallocating space to the most efficient modes, including walking, public transport and cycling.
And it's also about how much is the impact? And we're saying that your parking data suggests that we need not be so worried about the impact. And I'd ask you please just to investigate that. And also, if you're going to do the economic impact, could you please do the economic impact, including that of the congestion in your city and of the waves rolling over Thordun Key? Because that's what our, that's what our why is. That's what it's got to be as we think about, about transport and place.
Thank you. Councillor Sparrow.
We heard the expression, the Thordun Key being the weakest link, the scariest part. What we're proposing doing, changing from angled parking to parallel parking, still means cyclists are on the road. Would the, I mean, the ideal surely would be some form of off-road link for cyclists to get along that part. Is there merit in the suggestion? I mean, you're talking about 2,000 plus cyclists a day in three years from completion, so we're talking about bigger, the numbers of cyclists increasing. So would there be merit in looking at the suggestion of an elevated cycleway? Surely that, some form of off-road link would be far superior to staying on the road, which is what we're talking about.
Okay, if I can respond to that. So two roles that I've had, one on the Great Highway, the idea of a continuous route along the harbour, where, yes, ideally for people who visit Wellington, who want to do a relaxed ride, it'd be fantastic to have a route all the way along the harbour. We've seen many attempts at posting the position that as the ideal solution. It's not. It's a bit like saying, hey, you've got a motorway, you don't need Thordun Key, you don't need the Hut Road. There is still a need for commuters, for people to get to their destinations. The other role that I've had is actually as part of the Thordun Key Working Group, where actually collectively we came up with a fashion for Thordun Key and objectives, which was to make it safe, to actually make it a destination, to make it a place where people could feel safe, whether they came on car, bike, public transport, walking, all of that. And we actually got so close to coming to the right solutions, which actually are now back on the table. And I absolutely applaud NZTA and what they're proposing, because it is really putting that fashion into place of what Thordun Key can look like. So everybody feels it's actually an enjoyable place, it's not an industrial place that feels unsafe for people. Because yes, it's not me as a cyclist, but actually you look at pedestrians as well, they're hugely impacted by the, by the safety concerns now from angled parking, as the motorists themselves. And it's a difference between why we need to do this now versus what let's get Wellington moving will provide. It is the safety that we need today versus actually making it much more enjoyable. So people who normally wouldn't ride a bike would actually be feeling compelled to do it because it actually is, that's sort of infrastructure that absolutely makes people safe having separated cycleways. So yes, this is just for safety, but feeding into the long-term solution.
If I could just chime in briefly. I like the question because it really uncovers a kind of unspoken assumption that this is about getting people through this space and not mixing with what happens in the street. I would say that people on bikes are part of the whole community, they want to access the businesses, the destinations along Thordun Key. You know, it's quarter to six on our, what day is it, David? Tuesday, I think. It's really hard to get working parents along to consultation at this time, but if they were here, you would hear from them saying, as a working parent, I want to be able to bring my children to these destinations. The idea of an elevated path that's away from the street is really a false solution. We want these people in the street, they're part of our community. So yeah, I get it can be tempting to think, can we find an alternative route? But I've also heard from people that, you know, riding between two fences adjacent to the rail yard feels very scary to people, particularly in the dark, and that's not the way we want to go. It's not the way that great cycling, the way great cities provide access for their citizens. It's a great question, thanks, Malcolm.
Thank you very much, Mayor Foster.
First question is a very simple one, which is just the data you've got there, David, is that all from, what's the source of that data? Is that all from the parking sensors, et cetera?
From your Parking Services Division, they download it from your contractor, yeah.
And did you get any weekend parking data?
Yes, yes. Or do we say, you can ask as many questions of a dataset as you want, I wanted to keep it simple. There are, there is, it's less parking on a weekend. You also got to remember, I think it's free parking on weekends?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, okay, you killed that, did you?
Sadly.
The weekday parking is a higher occupancy than the week. It depends on the time of day as well. And it also depends, there are different zones. We all know that the area north of the bypass is less heavily parked, and I hope that it's okay to walk a short distance to a car park. It is denser down in the main, the main strip.
And you've obviously segregated that by the P120 versus the long stay parking as well.
Yes, and there's P5s, there's the P560s, the P600s. I've taken, this has got public holidays and weekends taken out of it.
Right, okay, cool. Okay, and the other question was for you, Ron, which is, I know it was a very long process of engagement around, you know, what to do with Thordun Key. Can you just sort of tell us about the degree to which there was agreement or disagreement between the different groups within that, and then kind of what happened with all that?
Yeah, glad you're asking that question. We actually had a really good agreement for the whole part of it. We absolutely agreed on the fashion, the objectives. It was towards the end part where we came up, where we looked at the options to actually engage on, to get public and wider community feedback on, then unfortunately, at that point, the working group, a part of it split away and did its own consultation, a discussion with, with the council, at which point unfortunately that engagement, that wider consultation with the wider community stopped. But I still emphasised the fashion and the objectives, they were very much agreed by all parties.
So would it be fair to say that the vision and objectives were, yep, we're good with that, but there was disagreement on the how to deliver that?
It was actually, it was not even so much what we'd deliver on, it was again on the parking data.
Yeah.
And yeah, we've got, the data itself now proves that there is, there is opportunity to change the parking without significant impact. The other thing that I'll throw in, good thing is that in a time we've seen the improvements to the Hut Roads, and that hasn't impacted as much as people said. They said the sky would fall in and hasn't. The drivers there, the businesses, they, they work really well together with cyclists, see really good behaviour. It doesn't stop people getting access to the, to the car yards. It works, yeah, it's good. So it can work, absolutely.
All right. Look, thank you very much for coming in again, we really appreciate that. You generously giving up your time, and I'd just like to acknowledge all the people that came in today for our fora. That was fantastic, we got a lot of useful information, and obviously the staff have put in a lot of hard work. Is there someone who would like to move the motion? Thank you, councillor Conde. Is there someone who would like to second? Councillor Day, is there any debate? Have we, sorry, we've got the wording up there on the screen? We will debate it on Thursday by preference. All right, okay, so I don't think we need to write a reply then. So if people could vote, thank you very much. Councillor Sparrow, yes, I know. So we've got that. All right, thank you, that goes through. So, at two for the Karakia.
Unehea, unehea, unehea kitu uru tapenui. Kia watea, kia mama, te naku, te tina na, te waerua. Ete aata katu. Koera e rongo, pakaria aki ranga. Kia watea, kia watea, aka ko watea.
Kia ora, everyone, thank you very much again for all your hard work.